Well, six thirty, so I'll call this meeting to order. First order of business, do we have any additions or deletions? No. So, approval of the second one for the first January first or January second.
Okay. So, I make a motion to, I make a motion to discuss and approve the minutes from our January eleventh, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Second.
January second meeting.
Oh, sorry, January second amendment, please, sorry. Yes, that's what I meant to say.
Any corrections, comments? No, I don't think so.
It looks good.
All those in favor of approving the minutes then?
Aye.
Pay orders for the eighteenth.
Is there another one there?
There's a new one, oh, I see.
Should be a new one on there.
Got it.
Out of the hills trailer, the trailer, just purchased a lot.
Gotcha.
So, the Fitzgerald stuff doesn't come out of that twenty-two thousand we're paying each time?
It, uh, we get reimbursed, we pay it, and then we submit it and they reimburse us.
Okay.
We've already reimbursed us for that first payment we made to Fitzgerald.
Okay. Do we need a motion to pay orders?
I, I make a motion to discuss and approve the pay orders as of January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, for the amount of thirty-three thousand, nine hundred seventy-one, and ninety-four cents.
I'll second. I've already asked my question.
Question or comments? Other than the previous one?
It's a Tuesday, we're all thrown off.
All those in favor, approve.
Aye.
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 Honorable mentions, I hope I pronounced these names right. Thank you to Sanford Witherwell for donating funds to the Sugar Hill Cemetery Maintenance, Devon Tom Pepperman, Ann Veneman, and Sabra Shulman for doing to the monthly newsletter. Ozzy and Linda Mercado donated to the food shelf. Michael McLeod Ball donated to the Conservation Commission, so thank you to all those. Road Commissioner report.
Well, not a whole lot of the Road Commissioner part of it, it just, it's been slow. Do have one issue, I don't know if everybody's heard about the International. That blew up, not sure what blew up in it, whether a head gasket, a head, um, a block, put the antifreeze in the exhaust, so it's not good. It's parked outside, um...
Did it hydro lock or anything, or?
No, what happened is a radiator pipe, one of the coolant pipes broke underneath the motor, she didn't know it, driving it. I think it got hot, but...
Yeah.
But it's, it's just, it's one of those things. Not sure what to do with it, um, whether we can try to maybe go for, I've got to look, Sandy's looked into it some, I haven't called the gentleman at Bennington yet, about, they're still doing buyouts, clunkers, or for whatever it is.
I was reading through, um, what Sandy said, and I highlighted a sentence in it, and the sentence is, "To qualify, the vehicle must have operated for at least seven thousand miles," which it fits, "per year for the last two years," so we've only had it one year, and then it goes on, "and have at least three years of remaining useful life."
Well, it's got a lot of useful life if you fix the motor.
And how much is that?
Oh, I don't know, that's the problem. It could be astronomical.
But, so, in the condition it is right now, its remaining useful life cannot be accessed?
No. It's, it's dead in the water right now.
So, I think that might be an issue, because it says, the number of years it could continue to operate if it wasn't being replaced, so it's not an operative, operational machine.
Well, and the other thing was, I read in there, I think it's got to be a two thousand and nine, is that true?
It says model year, two thousand and nine or earlier, and what's the model?
Fourteen, I think that's what's...
So, I don't think with all those things said that it's going to qualify for this program.
But, so, in that case, we got a year out of it.
How much did we spend on it?
Fifteen.
It's about fifteen.
They can do a compression test to determine if it is a head gasket?
Yeah, the thing would have to have, you know, either pay somebody, come in, and they're not, they're gonna, what they're gonna do is, I presume, is they're gonna try to pull an injector and see which cylinder has the antifreeze in it before they try to start it or do anything to it. It may be fine on compression, it's just if it's got a bad head, cracked head, or bad blown head gasket, it's gonna just run the antifreeze right into the jug. So, you know, it's...
Who was driving that? They didn't notice that it was getting hot? I mean, it's got, it's gotta be a temperature gauge here.
Yeah, but, yeah. If you're plowing or sanding, and I'm not trying to cover anybody's butt here, but, you don't look at the gauges a whole lot sometimes, if it's slippery, you're paying attention to the road. You know, and, and if it, if it was something that blew and went on exhaust or something, she'd smell it instantly. But where this pipe broke on the very bottom end of the motor, it just dripped on the ground. And it did it after it left the shop, because it was no, it'd been in the shop and there was nothing on the floor at all. So, it did it going down the road.
How, how often was this one in the shop while we had it, for the year that we had it?
Well, they did a bunch of little stuff on it, and he just done the, well, he put a starter on it because of this deal. I think that's the reason the starter went, because he was trying to start it with antifreeze in it. But it was over the turn-ins and they put a hitch on the back of it to tow a trailer. And I think that was about, they'd done a couple tires and a brake something on it, in-house. But I don't think they'd done much to it, anything major that I can remember.
So, it was basically in use, full use for a year?
Yeah.
So, it was still turning over?
Yes. But while it was turning over, they saw their antifreeze running out the exhaust pipe on the bottom.
They used to do that when it was running?
Well, don't know that. If it got hot enough, popped a head gasket or a block, or, you know, cracked the head.
Cracked the head, right. But, I mean, those things are repairable.
Oh, yeah, it's a repairable. My guess is, it probably, if it's a head, it's probably ten grand, have somebody do it.
Right.
Versus buying something comparable would be tremendous.
Oh, if you, you wouldn't, begin with, we wouldn't buy another single axle, that was a spare, but that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck.
Right, right.
Can you find a, well, used motor?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure you could.
You mean, what, you're looking at what, probably ten grand for that?
No, I don't think so.
I don't think it'd be that, but...
You know, you're gonna have time of changing it out.
Right, time would be, time would be a lot longer.
Yeah, and you'll have more money in changing it out probably than a used motor.
Right.
And how many hours and miles on it?
Well, I don't think there's many.
Yeah, so, it, like, why completely rip out the, unless need to, why rip out the entire engine versus just, if you can?
Well, if it's gonna be ten thousand for a head.
But you don't know if the used engine, you don't know how it's been used, all the other stuff, that's the...
What we need to do if we're gonna look into it seriously is figure out, get a really close estimate, because it's fifteen thousand dollar truck, you put ten in it, you're throwing money away.
Right.
You're not, you're not gaining anything, you're, you're putting ten more thousand into a truck that's already fifteen thousand dollars, and you now got it at twenty-five, you're never gonna get it out of it.
The only advantage to that is it keeps us plowing when one truck breaks down.
Yes, it does, it's a spare, that's why you need to get somebody, give it a good estimate.
Right.
You know, maybe, hopefully, it's just a head or something. And not, because if you're gonna get into it for ten grand, I, I would say, no, don't do it.
Right, right.
I think take your loss.
If it costs ten grand, replace it, repair the head?
Yeah.
Why, why so much?
It's crazy, mechanic, mechanic work is just right out of this world now.
Yeah, they're what, fifty, seventy-five, oh, so now, at least?
Oh, some, most of them are a hundred.
Are they?
Oh, yeah, all the truck mechanics are a hundred, a hundred plus.
Because I was gonna say, what's his name in Castleton, can probably repair the head, or?
Rattlesnake Ridge, no, that's for heaven.
No, I'm thinking, um, I'm a little, what's his name, Eugene, um, but right down left-hand side there in Castleton. Right in the dip, right by the railroad tracks.
Oh, not, uh, Edgerton?
Yes.
No, he won't pull the motor.
He won't, he won't pull it, but if he gets somebody to pull it and take it to him, he can fix it, so... It seems to be pretty reasonable.
Yeah, you'll, if he redoes the motor, he'll have twelve to fifteen and just redoing the motor.
Oh, yeah, I'm just thinking the head.
Plus pulling it. Yeah, if the head's cracked, I'm, it's junk, you'll have to buy another used head, so...
Like, the question is, is the body and the actual dump on the, on the back and the frame, is that's all in good enough condition that it's worth it to put this money into it, I guess that's the...
A certain amount of money, right, you don't, you just can't get carried away with that.
No, 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 for sure not, no.
So, it's just one of those things, you're gonna have to look into it. This is not really the time of year to have it, look into it, because, you know, we need it, but yet, it's sitting outside again now, and they just dragged it out and put it outside so they could have their bayback, you know? Everybody's just booked. If you can find somebody, come down and look at it, and give me a ballpark estimate on it, that was close, that'd be the way to go.
Why don't we do that and see how much it's going to cost?
Yeah.
Get all the options together, by the next meeting or whenever you can get them down there.
Well, we'll be, a couple meetings probably.
Would like Earl's, somebody from Earl's be able to come down?
Yeah, the Earl's could possibly come down and do it. But finding somebody that'll do motor work is almost possible.
I think the first step is to get it looked at.
Yeah.
I just think we do that step, and then we'll take whatever else we need to do as we find out some information from this first thing. That would be mine.
So, I don't know what the toll and charge was to tow it there, but...
Look, it was six oh eight?
Four hundred dollars.
It was four hundred?
Yeah.
Four hundred, four hundred.
That wasn't, West Hill, yeah.
Yeah, it was four hundred.
Yeah.
That wasn't bad.
Pretty reasonable.
Yeah, it was after the storm and stuff. Yeah, that's pretty reasonable.
Okay.
Going on to other things, I looked into the, the blower, um... Well, that paperwork you have in front of you right now, that's actually a mulcher. It's a, it's a brush hog and mulcher combination. Looked into this, talked to the, actually, the owner of this company this past week. This machine here is set up to run on our size excavator. The only thing that we'd have to do to our excavators, our excavator's not plumbed with a K-string, which all that is, is a hydraulic line, it runs off this machine, runs up the boom, down the boom, and runs into the hydraulic tank, it's just called a K-string. All you'd have to do is put the plumbing on it, it's something they do. If we'd known we were gonna run something like this when we bought it, we'd had it set up that way.
Because this is similar to what the state was running, when they bought that, right?
Correct, this is the same thing, except it's a three-foot version, sits, it'll be all adapted to hook right on the quick couplers of the mini-excavator, and it'll reach up and you can shave the brush overhanging the road, and what knocks it off, it'll cut two-to-four-inch-sized trees, knocks it down, I'm not saying you're gonna grind up two- and four-inch trees, but you're gonna knock the brush down and just go along, there's a video with this, if anybody wants to watch it. This rough manifestation, there's a video on every machine they have, and what they do with that.
Because that, the machine that the state's got is pretty slick.
Yeah, this is basically the same machine, except a small version, and it's, it's on an excavator so you can reach over guardrails, around things, and not getting, you know, not have issues with ditches, because you can turn it up, turn it down, slow, but either way.
And does this work better than the blower that we were thinking about, or?
Well, this is totally different from a side boom mower.
Okay.
This, this is gonna do, this arrangement here is for cutting the overhanging brush, which the other one will do, but the other one will just cut it and knock it down, it will not brush, mulch it up.
Okay.
When we talked, I think, two weeks ago or a month ago, about not renting that machine, we talked about putting some of the rental of the machine towards this, so this winter is a perfect example, it's in-house. They could, somebody'd be running that every day in the wintertime, cutting brush, you know?
It's about twice the price of what we talked about originally, isn't it?
No, no, the original one was about four grand.
It was four?
Forty-four hundred, actually, and when I talked to him, it wouldn't go on this machine because of the high flow of hydraulics on our three oh seven five. Yeah, and it was forty-four and five thousand, the first two prices we talked about.
And then the one that you found, because I'm just on their site, and it says from fifty-four nineteen, is there anything special about this one?
This one here, if you look, that is a tree slayer, it does not have a mulcher head on it, a mulching plate.
With the mulching teeth, okay.
Yeah, with the mulching teeth, that, and this is on sale, this one is, I just, it just came on sale this week, that's why I have it, yeah.
Probably should broke it.
Yeah.
Is that rock?
Rock, yeah.
Is it rotating cylinder with the moosh teeth?
No, no, it's a, it's a bush hog style.
Oh, it's horizontal?
Yeah, three, three blades and cut two to four inches, then the center of the machine, the disc, has carbide tipped teeth in it, by what I can tell. And it, you just go right down, they show, they have a video of it going right along a riverbank, mulching it all right up.
How much the K-string is it cost?
I don't know, I tried to get all...
Go on, why ask for yours?
I'm guessing it's probably gonna be a thousand bucks for the plumbing.
Yeah.
I don't know that, I may be wrong.
It's pretty cold.
You know, you can do it with a hydraulic line, but it just looks awful tacky on a new machine. Better off put steel lines on it.
Pull those shields out, you don't have a K-string.
Oh, yeah, you gotta have a K-string, but you can put a hydraulic line back through as a K-string, instead of buying all the steel tubing, but it just looks terrible. So, that, this here is, like I said, is something we've talked about twice now. I, you know, I don't know if you want to do it, it's about a month out to get one, free delivery.
Well, let's table it for now, till, give everybody the couple weeks to look.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes, that sounds good.
We'll bring it up at the next meeting again.
Okay, that's fine, the others, yeah, if you can look online, they'll have it.
But it's on sale, how long?
I don't know that, it just happened to come in.
What's the original price when it's not on sale?
Yeah.
It, it's not much offside, actually, it's pretty close to that price anyways.
Just checking.
So, I think he was looking at fifty-four, the plate was five hundred, the mulching plate's five hundred.
Yeah, or seventy, with a mulching teeth.
Yeah.
Sandy, if I sent this, if I email the link to you, can you send it out to everybody?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
And the other one thing we talked about was the blower, um, I went and got prices from, uh, something turf, I, I think the paperwork's in the pamphlet.
What's that?
No, on that blower that I got.
Yeah, we're gonna do that the next meeting.
Oh, next meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, all right, so I won't even get into it?
No.
So, but other than that, there's not much else on the Road Commissioner, and if you have any questions.
Do you know how long the bridge will be out?
My guess is permanent. I don't think they're gonna fix it. I've got people...
There's the one in South Walling, in, uh, East Wallingford.
I've had people calling me on it, wanting to know if they could close it. I don't know how they can do that, but...
Is that the old trust bridge you're talking about, or?
No, the, the main bridge off, on one fifty-five, coming out of East Wallingford, by the store, fell in.
How can they close that permanently?
Well, that's what I said, how, there's no truck access going, you come down from Mount Holly on one fifty-five, you have to take a right and then try to make a left on the one oh three, and it's almost impossible with tractor-trailer.
Very, yeah, it's, and it's, yeah.
And there's, the visibility coming from Ludlow Way is not good, because people roll right along at fifty-five, sixty, and they're not gonna make it.
Fifty-five, sixty? On a bad weather day?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, to turn, take a left off of that is near impossible.
It is.
Yes.
I've done it with trucks, it's not good.
Or even trying to take the right, to go from one oh three, you're going in, you're either going
This weird angle.
Into the oncoming lane to make the turn, or you're in the oncoming lane when you make the turn.
And the number of big trucks going to get onto one fifty-five, yeah.
Another thing we had on there was a certificate of mileage and special weights. We need to give Sandy authorization to sign that.
They, they, you said there was no special weights?
Oh, on the bridges, oh, we know, yeah, we just talked about that.
Yeah.
The only two bridges we have are the one in East Wallingford, Carrer Camp Road, we just redecked, and that's a sixteen thousand pound, and the one for Van Wick is a sixteen thousand pound. All the rest of them are just standard twenty-four thousand pound bridges.
And sixteen, because they're wood decks, they're, that's what the weight is?
Yep, stage rule.
Is it, just thinking about, like, has anybody ever lessened the weight limit, like, I like say on the one on Creek Road, like, lessen the weight limit on that to eke out a little bit more life out of it?
Is that something we do or state, state, I don't know, it's...
Like, it was like, even though it's temporary, even though it would be like five years?
Because it's accessible, it's only one-way access if it's flooded, so I don't know how they could post that any lower.
Okay.
They, they do have to get milk trucks out that way.
Yeah, 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 okay.
On the one oh three bridge, that's a state's decision?
That's a state bridge.
That's a state bridge, state decision, not town.
Yeah, well, they, what, three, six months ago, they tried to throw it up and let the town take it over.
Yeah.
Sandy, something's going on.
It's, yeah, it's, I don't know what they're gonna do with it, it's gonna be a tough decision on their part.
Making sure that's clear, not us.
So, we need a motion for, to authorize Sandy to...
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're authorized, Sandy. All set then, Phil?
I'm all set, thank you.
Public comments?
Well, I first want to compliment you on having your meetings in here, because I can hear people upstairs, I can't hear anybody. And I think it would be good if there was some type of schedule where you could find out when they're gonna have the meetings on television, if they're probably available, I don't know where to go for it.
I don't know, website, HGTV has a website, they post it on there, or you can call.
ETV, Vermont ETV?
No, HGTV.
HGTV.
Okay, okay. And the acoustics have always been a problem on these town meetings, I, I watch a lot of them, and it's really tough to understand what people are saying, of course, I'm not the best at hearing anyway, but that's how you get by. And the other thing, I'm here to find out, if you got my letter?
This week.
And I was wondering about how we were coming on the, or I can...
I can answer that, we do have a tank, they are gonna re, it's a thou, I'm pretty sure it's a thousand gallon.
Yeah.
They're gonna reset it back up, they gotta have a new sprinkler head made on the end, which is just PVC pipe, you move together, so, yes, they do have one, and they're gonna put that together this spring.
Yeah, and what about the chlorides to go with it? I see there's only nine hundred and seventy-five dollars in there, if you're gonna do that, is there gonna go far?
Well, we, I don't know if we even used up last year's allotment, and we got...
Well, that's for sure.
Well, I, you know, I know they don't put a lot out, but, um...
Well, I'm happy to see, why you got a tank?
Yeah, and it was out in the weeds, I thought it was no good, but it was...
Is it poly?
Yeah, it's a big poly tank.
What are your thoughts?
It's, they've had it.
Oh, somebody could get for nothing?
Yeah, they had it.
Eat that.
It's out back, it was bent out back, buried in the mess up.
Oh, down here?
Yeah, down by the town garage, shed.
I thought they had one all these years. I were getting down with the base of it, yeah, well, I just, if, if you could just get the chloride in it and use it, that would be the best thing, wouldn't it?
Yeah, just fill it in with water, chlorine in the water.
Yeah.
And now, when they grade, so it knocks...
Yeah, every time they grade, you know, as soon as they grade, if you put it on.
Yeah.
And, I mean, this time of year, the dust is a problem, but there's not much you're gonna be able to do about it, you're just gonna have salt windows anyway, but in the summer with all the windows open, it can be pretty miserable.
Yeah.
So, appreciate you doing that. That's about all that, I guess. So, I'll head out.
I was gonna say, thank you.
See you.
So, fiscal year twenty-four budget review, file review on our budget. As you guys all know, drafted that we had done originally, been out with a twenty-three percent increase.
And then there's some proposed changes.
Yes, Sandy, Julie, and I went through and relooked at some stuff.
Okay.
At this point, if the board accepts the changes, it would be just like a six percent increase in the budget.
It's much better than twenty-three.
And the big knockout of that was to make sure that we're using for the grader, we're using that other fund instead of using, budgeting it.
Right.
That was the big, big, big kickoff.
Fifty.
Yeah.
And then the police budget.
And the police budget's the other big one.
We reduced to twenty-four hours.
And they really had, like, no, they were like, we could do more, but...
They gave us no assurances they could.
Yeah, so, no, why would we give money to that?
I think that makes sense. At least it's still an increase, we go up to three full days. We can see about what we can do more.
I'm just concerned being a lot of the stuff we have heard, the feedback from the town about between thefts, speeding, and just pure presence.
No, I'm hearing what you're saying.
But, I mean, we've got a...
Isn't that fund where you're pulling, sorry, isn't that fund where we're pulling the money from the fifty thousand for the grader? That's this year, what about next year? But, I mean, are we gonna pull funds out of that every year, or sooner or later, the town's gonna get hit with that?
Well, it'll, we'll have to budget for it next year, but then, um, the milk cap, the excavator will be paid off, so, well, that's not huge, but, or the loader, the loader will be paid off in this budget, so that'll be twenty-one thousand less we'd have to budget next year, so...
But we're talking on two hundred and, what, two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollar grant, or whatever the cost is?
Yeah, but we were paying, five payments, so it'd be fifty.
A year?
Yeah, and then, but this year we have twenty-one thousand in the budget for the loader, we wouldn't have that next year, so, we'd be more like thirty, the difference.
Which wouldn't be as big of a hit.
Yeah.
But then we, okay, but then the next year after that would be the same, same deal, we wouldn't have to, it wouldn't mean greasing, but it would be the same, fifty.
But somewhere in this next five years, you're gonna have a truck replaced.
Yeah, it's, it's already over, it should have been replaced two years ago.
Is there any way, I mean, how much is in the, in that fund that we're gonna pull fifty out? I'm not sure how much we could take out of it.
Two-thirds of it, I think it was two-thirty, and we could take two-thirds, the voter said we'd have to leave, we'll, one-third for tax reduction, yes.
Yep.
So, if we pull two-thirds of that out of there, it's gonna save us a fortune in interest, and your payments now, if you stretch them out over a five-year period, they're gonna be minimal. That way, the budget's not gonna take a hit, so sooner or later, the budget's gonna take a hit.
Yeah.
And it's gonna, you're gonna have, it's gonna hurt like it does right now, whether it's this year or in two years down the road, because trucks are gonna have to be replaced.
Two years down the road, the budget increase may not be twenty-three percent.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, if you add the grader in in two years, the the full payment of the grader, fifty thousand dollars, it may not be, you know, twenty percent or whatever we went up, but if you could, the more you pay on it now, on money that we have sitting there, because we're not making very much interest on it. Right? I mean, if we're making any on on the money that's in there. So it's it's cheaper to use money that you have than it is to borrow the money. We don't need a credit rating. We've got one. So the only purpose of borrowing money from the bank is to pay the bank whatever it was, five percent. So why not use money that we already have? Right now.
Initially, that's what the board had discussed, and the intent was that we were gonna take two thirds of that Fernfield money.
Yeah.
And pay it toward the grader.
Right.
And then after that, we would.
Right.
Pay whatever it would be, so. And it won't necessarily be fifty thousand dollars payment each year.
Well, if we did, we're only talk, you were originally talking, putting fifty down on it, right? Now we're talking of putting whatever two thirds of that is.
The one fifty-four, it was two thirty-four that we have in there?
Two thirty-four, nine, yep.
Okay, so that's around a hundred and fifty-four thousand.
Right, and the grader was what, two fifty?
No, two oh nine.
Huh?
Two oh nine, I don't remember exactly.
That was two sixty.
No, I think it was around two sixty.
I didn't think it was that high.
So you got a hundred grand, so you're gonna spend twenty grand a year on the remainder where you're spending fifty grand a year now. You know, on your budget. So you're gonna save thirty grand a year on money that's not making you any money where it sits. But you're spending. Where I'm going is the interest rate's five percent. You're not getting five percent from the bank. Why not use that money to save us money? So you're gonna save that money over a period of time. Because I was thinking about it, it's like, you know.
Two sixty-six.
Why leave it in the bank?
Two sixty-one?
Two sixty-six, five.
Two sixty-six, five.
You'd have around a hundred grand-ish to finance over a five-year, or actually, I think we took it eight, eight years, right?
We cannot legally do that without putting it before the board or the voters.
Just spend that money?
We can only take a loan out for five years.
Okay, well, even five years is still, you know, a hundred thousand is twenty thousand dollars a year.
Which would be less than the excavator payments that we're making now, that are gonna be done, so theoretically, then our tax base would go down.
The budget would down until we buy a new truck.
Or you do the budget, so you do twenty, and then was it thirty that we're doing for the excavator every year? Or up until, like, this the last payment?
Twenty, twenty-one.
Okay, so then there's not really wiggle room in terms of putting that extra in, but.
We were gonna use some of that revenue for a sand shed.
Yeah.
Right.
So how much of that two thirty-four do we actually have?
Well, two thirds will be released, the voters agreed on two thirds.
Right.
A third will be for reducing taxes.
Right.
So we're, we'll have two thirds of that, two thirty-four. You know, we have a whole year of gaining interest, so.
Yes.
A little more.
Well, the interest, what, half, two percent? Oh, okay.
Some of yours I've done really well.
Yes, that's why we wanted to keep one third in. Because that's about the amount of money that the fund started with, and then it grew to the two thirty-four.
But then we would basically, we wouldn't be able to use that fund, those funds at all to for a sand shed.
Right.
Came up. For salt shed.
Right.
I don't think that's gonna happen anyways, do you? Yeah, that's what I mean.
You can take a right over look at Brubers.
I haven't been over there.
Yeah, go take a look at their sand salt shed.
The tart, they post the ability.
That's a problem. Spaced up eight feet on each side with blocks, you know, fishing down the middle, it's about probably twenty feet, twenty, twenty-five feet in the center. I've seen, actually, I've seen two of those that done, salt sheds down that way directly. I don't know how much, I don't think they got that much into it.
Yeah, boy, steel is so out of this world.
I don't know, that was just, like I said, the money is there, it's not really making us, it's making us money, but it's not making us a whole lot of money. Or should we use that and just pay, you know, pay interest?
Okay.
But at the same time, is it worth it to keep more than just the third left so that we don't get in a situation where we have a big expenditure that we need to use those funds for? Like, this is definitely one of those reasons, but is this the absolute emergency of situation?
This one, we have some time to plan.
Right.
Truck then.
So.
I mean, that's that's all a decision that can be down the road. We need to decide on a budget.
Right.
Sure, right.
So is there, is there any choice in using any of this money towards the grader? What are people feeling about?
We were saying the the fifty thousand is the way that we're getting that out of the budget is to use that, those funds for the fifty thousand to this time.
Okay.
But Bruce, you're saying that past that, we have to, we can wait, we can think about it. We don't have to make that decision now.
So we're gonna take, are we taking fifty out of that fund towards the grader right now?
I think, I think that that makes the most sense to me. And it takes a far, a fair chunk out of that, of that budget.
Like I said, I'm still on the thing that the money is there.
Yeah.
Right.
It's better to use what we have, maybe not all of it, even if you use a hundred thousand of it and leave extra in there, but it's it's gonna drop the budget down.
Yeah.
You know, and you're not paying that five percent interest. That's, we've got it, use it, I mean.
Well, the budget wouldn't go down right now because it's not, we don't have it allocated. Because the fifty thousand, like, if we're gonna be theoretically using this to pay chunks of it going down the line, right now, if we take another fifty, right at this moment, it's not gonna affect this budget at all because we don't, we're not, we're planning to spend that money this year.
The money's not available right now. Am I correct on that? The money's not available right now.
December.
December.
It's still, yeah.
So it's next, well, it's next budget, but.
Well, the grader, we don't expect the grader until the money's, we don't have access to the money either, so.
Okay.
Right.
So it's like six one half a dozen another.
Yeah.
Is there anyone who's feeling any movement of putting more than fifty thousand down initially towards the grader? We do have a little wiggle room, but I don't know how much we wanna wiggle.
I think just for the sake of trying to get our, this budget finished.
Okay.
And maybe we come, get back to it, maybe in April, we can come back and say, okay, now we can think about allocating some more money towards it. Because that's not, that's outside of budgetary.
So we just need to remember to revisit this.
Yeah, outside of budget.
Right, so we would, we did, yeah, just making sure that we're, what we're doing now is affecting the budget because we put that in, but then going forward, we don't have to worry about it as much in terms of getting it in a budget time, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So if we come back.
At the last town meeting, the voters gave us permission to take two thirds of that money and use it.
On infrastructure.
Or purchase as we deem fit.
Right.
Right, so outside of normal budgetary times, so, yeah.
We can make that decision.
Right.
So better to figure that out after town meeting, after everything's done, and then we can come back to it and say, okay, actually, now we wanna actually say, we wanna put a hundred fifty, or the rest of the hundred left, because we're doing one fifty-four.
It's a decision we can make once the grader comes in.
True.
What does the, just what's, what is the down payment on the grader? Is it?
Whatever we decide to do.
Okay, there's no exception.
Right.
If you pick up, okay.
Right. Okay.
So I guess we need a motion to approve this revised budget.
I make a motion to approve the revised budget.
I'll second.
Do we need a dollar amount on that?
No. Where is the dollar amount? Do we go with the expense? Amount here?
Which set of numbers do we need, Sandy?
What?
Which set of numbers do we need?
Is it this set here?
The one, four, two, six?
Two, six.
Okay, four.
Does it need to include the amount to be raised by taxes per motion?
No, not for the budget. No, we can, we'll approve all that with a warning, a warning.
Okay.
Okay. Just need that number.
To approve the revised budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four of one million, four hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-four cents.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those? Come on, let's start here. Do you have any talent, or anything?
Good, how are you?
Good, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for hosting me. Good to see you all in person.
We all have draft copies of the.
Yes.
I liked your corrections, by the way.
Oh, thank you. I just thought it might make it clearer for voters. And I was, that's what I was just looking at. I think it has all the exact same wording and information.
Yep.
It's just the order. I just thought that a little bit better.
Any other comments, questions on it?
And everything's being voted by a straight ballot, so at town meeting, it's just purely informational. We're doing nothing.
So Julie, it's the one million, fifty-one, one thirty-three, thirty-nine to be raised in taxes.
It's one million, fifty-one, one thirty-three, thirty-nine?
Yes.
Can I ask a question about the stabilizing the real estate taxes? So what, why do we do that? But these are, because I I guess the just as these are more historical sites in town that we're trying to preserve?
Yeah, just, I mean, these are all nonprofits, so they.
Okay.
You know, rode, the Rotary Village, so they don't have to raise money and, I mean, taxes every year.
Yeah, this way they they can just pay that money because our budget isn't very big, so.
Right.
To be able to pay, you know, thousands of dollars in taxes, we just wouldn't exist.
No, I just.
I just had to, we were just on a meeting, and I just offered to donate money towards something that we were short in the budget. I was just like, look, I'll kick in a little bit of money we need. It's easier than trying to beg people for money.
Yeah, I just hadn't seen that before. Maybe I had seen it in a previous one, but I hadn't seen it before, so I was curious.
So this is just every five years, so.
Right, so it might not have, or I might have seen it, but.
I asked the biggest two people the same questions.
My door is running on the record.
I missed that. I'll listen to HGTV on that one.
Okay.
We need a motion to accept the warning.
So we're gonna go with, on Article eight, we're gonna go with Timmy's wording.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
And that's the wording that's in this one, or is it updated? Yeah, okay.
The only thing she really did was to move the exclamation, exclamation in front of the question.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I had it afterwards, so. When she did it, it made really, I didn't, I see that.
It's always another set of eyes.
It, that's it, that's what it is.
You look at it so long, you have another set of eyes, you're like, oh, oh, of course, yeah.
So I make a motion to accept the warning for the Town of Wallingford Annual Town Meeting on March sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Second?
Oh, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those? Thank you.
You're welcome. If you need or want me for anything else, then pop back.
Thank you.
It's good to see you all.
Good to see you. Thank you, Timmy.
Good to see you. March the eleventh. At the elementary school this year.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're on to a request for proposals on the town wide reappraisal.
And we have one proposal here.
Yes, Nirmic.
Yep.
So Nirmic is the only submission we have, right?
That's it.
Okay.
A lot of choices there.
So it looks like, um, the total amount is the one thirty-three, eight hundred with the fifty-five, forty-five to be paid for two years, twenty-four months.
But this is next budget, right? Do we have to start this?
Right, this doesn't start till.
July twenty-four.
Till July twenty-four, so fiscal year twenty twenty-four. We already have seventy-nine thousand, four hundred fifty-nine dollars in the fund. Um, and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, another ten thousand will be added. And then, if I read this right, some amount will be added in June twenty twenty-four, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
We get about ten thousand more each year.
Yes, so that'll raise that amount to about a hundred thousand dollars as of then, with another ten going every year.
Okay.
So this will become a budget item.
Right, and yet.
Another year or two.
Right.
So we.
Basically, for the thirty.
We wanna be aware that somewhere soon down the road, we're gonna have to think about adding this.
So do I have a motion to award Nirmic?
I make a motion to award Nirmic the, um, the reappraisal of Wallingford contract.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those? Project manager agreement. I think this is basically.
Right.
Just need to, or it's approved for me to sign the.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You don't have to draw the bid when it's a, when it's a, um, regional commission. We've already approved, B-Trans is already approved, local regional as a project manager.
Okay, so you just need consensus?
Yeah, I think consensus on that would be fine.
Good with me.
Yep, good with me.
She's at the ball field, um, Rob. Took a look at the trees that were down at the ball field that brought up last time. He's giving us an estimate of six hundred dollars plus stump dump fees. And he said the town owns the airspace above its property, therefore, the town is within its rights to trim the trees.
Okay.
I didn't think it was an extreme emergency, but it is a maintenance issue. I didn't think it was an extreme emergency, but it is a maintenance issue, needs to be done.
Okay, so the, the trees still look pretty viable, though? Or...
I don't know, Sandy, you actually talked to them, right, or Rob?
He, he just said he didn't consider it an immediate hazard.
Okay.
Probably should come down.
Okay.
And the, uh, road crew did clean up the mess that was there, so that was nice.
The one out though?
The one that fell in the, in the parking lot?
Oh, the one fell in the parking lot. I thought one fell out the field too.
I know, because Rob went over and, uh, checked, and the road crew had cleaned it up between his, couple of his visits, so that was good.
Oh, okay.
So do we wanna give approval to Rob? Go ahead and...
Yes.
The trees.
It's a lot cheaper than a lawsuit when one falls on somebody's car.
I thought we had a agreement with, years ago, with TAM down in Arlington, Southern, or that will take the debris, like, from the dump, its stumps and stuff at the downed edge. Is that still, they were taking it for nothing at one point?
Uh...
Because that's where, when we started the...
Right.
Free, the dump.
With the bags, uh...
No, we have to, we have to truck it there.
You have to truck it there and take it, but they take it for nothing.
Right.
So I'm wondering if the stumps can do the same thing instead of paying the, taking it to a stump dump. Why can't we include it into that stuff that's at the dump and take it all at once?
Well, we haven't been taking anything down there, so it was just...
That was under my concerns at the, like, concerns.
The time and paying our employees to take it down there and the diesel and stuff, so...
Still, it'd be cheaper than paying stump dump fees and, because you're gonna pay the same thing to truck it up, wherever the stump dump is, and the fee to dump it, you know, helping the city, right?
I mean, Rob would have taken, Rob would take it.
Takes care of all of that, no?
It's just sixty-five dollars, it's just the ton, it's just the weight, he's not gonna charge us for transporting or anything, it's just whatever it weighs.
Because I noticed the pile over there was getting pretty big, that's why I was just saying, you know, just throwing that on top of a load that went to TAM. We built the verge of one stone.
But if we're saying that they're not going down, we haven't been bringing them down.
We haven't, but it's getting pretty full over there.
Yeah.
Well, that's not where he's gonna take it anyway, is he? I assume he has an outside source where he trucks it to?
Well, probably the city. Well, I think I'd say, I don't, that's the only one around, I don't think...
I don't, I don't know.
I don't know if they do it. I just, like I said, I saw the pile there and said, kind of join the two together and take it to TAM and pay up some of the stuff at the dump, at the transfer station at the same time.
I guess we would have, we'd have to start up that relationship if we haven't been using it to start first, and then we'd have to see if Rob would be willing to go down.
It was like, spent like, what, eight years, and I don't think we've ever taken anything there.
Oh, wow.
So I don't know if it's worth it. It's, you know...
Yeah.
Either way, I was just gonna bring it up, I noticed it the other day at the dump, and that pile is getting pretty big, or pretty big.
I can contact them again and see if they're still, if they're still running that same program where they take it to TAM.
They grind everything up, I think, they're gonna, they're the useful, but they still have it down there.
Okay.
So I guess the, we're approving the six hundred dollars for doing it, and then we're still figuring out the other part of it? The actual trucking up?
We probably won't save, well, I wouldn't save any money, but gets rid of some of Russia at the same time.
Do we need a motion on this?
Probably should.
For the six fifty? And we'll just do the six hundred for the tree, we'll leave out the stump dump fees right now? Correct?
Or just say stump dump fees to be determined?
Okay, so I make a motion that, um, we get Rob Barker for six hundred dollars plus stump dump fees to be determined, um, of the, um, the trees over the ball field.
Second?
I'll second.
Favor?
Aye.
What was none? So the annual town report dedication, Sandy has drafted. Dedication.
I read it through, I didn't see anything I wanted changed, did I?
No, it sounded perfect.
I thought she did an earlier job.
Yes, I agree.
And it's the select board report. I thought she did really good, too.
I read through that, and I didn't see anything that needed to be changed in that.
She made us, she made us look good. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Select board comments or concerns?
I guess the only thing I've noticed is there seems to be water runoff down, um, Prospect Street, Holloway.
Yeah. Yeah, running everywhere.
Yeah, I was gonna say...
It's leaking out of everywhere.
Okay.
My road, there's two places there covered in ice.
It's a dream about a lot of this winter.
Okay.
In fact, my son took and sanded the corner of my road yesterday because there was so much sand and ice on it that...
Wow, okay. Is there anything that can be done for that? Is that just the weather?
It's just the weather. It's, it's gonna, well, I hope it's gonna dry up some.
Right.
Freeze off, make it worse.
Yeah.
Yeah, basically, we're in spring, fall.
Oh, it's awful.
In the middle.
In the middle, in the middle of winter, so...
I don't know if you noticed how high the creek was the other day, Friday?
Oh, I noticed, it's right behind my house.
It's right behind my, oh, my word!
You started to hear the rocks stumble, that's what you know.
It sounds like a freight, it's like it's spring right now with that break.
The only other business we had was Lee Holden's letter.
Which we already took care of.
We already took care of.
Do you want, uh, Michelle's letter?
Oh, yeah. Thank you for saying something, Sandy.
Yeah, and that, that letter sounded good to me.
Yes. Okay, if there's nothing else?
Do they need to give me approval to sign that officially or anything?
Yeah, I have a copy for your sign first. For your side.
Everybody's good with the signing?
Yes.
Very good.
Silence.
So, um, I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Vows in favor?
Aye.
Very good.